Yes. Ah, thank you. Okay, now you can go ahead.
Good evening, Council. My name is Natalie. I'm the Climate and Natural Resources Manager. I'm joined today by Peter Passerelli, our Public Works Director. And we're here just to give you an update on some of the topics and projects that we've been working on related to our climate action plan. So today I'm going to cover just kind of a variety of different projects that have been going on. It's a little bit of a mixed bag, but we've been doing a lot. And so feel free to stop me with any questions or if there's any other projects that you're aware of that you kind of want a little update on. I also today was sitting in on a meeting for Clackamas County's Climate Action Plan. So I know that's not in our staff report, but I decided to kind of throw in a extra slide just to bring you guys up to speed on what I'm aware of for their climate action plan efforts. Um, so to start out, I just wanted to give an update on the 2021 legislation. So I know many of you are aware of this, but essentially we did get some significant bills passed. So House Bill 2021, this is the Clean Energy Transition Bill. So this is really significant for our greenhouse gas emissions, but also to achieve our 2030 goal of carbon-free electricity. So by 2030, the investor-owned utilities are essentially utilities of over, I believe, 25,000 customers. They need to be 80% below baseline emissions. And so that is going to be a big challenge for them. But PGE luckily Portland General Electric is our own IOU and they are kind of up for the challenge and we've been working with them closely. By not by 2035, they're aiming for 90% and by 2040, 100% essentially clean energy. And so I will add a caveat that, you know, this includes large hydro, but then it also potentially includes some renewable energy that we don't or we have previously decided is not part of our carbon-free electricity goal being biomass and biogas. So that's included as a renewable energy in the Oregon portfolio. So we'll always probably need to be considering balancing that with potentially some renewable energy credits or some other bundled rec products, essentially our own generation. But a really significant part of HB 2021 is the inclusion of this community green tariff language, which I'll be talking about in a little bit, but it essentially gives us the green light to work with PGE to develop our own community carbon-free product. That PGE was looking for that legislative language in order to kind of provide those guide rails in the development of this for when they went to the Public Utility Commission, went with a tariff. So I'll give you a little bit of update on that. But overall, there's also HB 2021 included some other significant language around environmental justice communities and inclusion in decision-making and PUC processes, but then also some additional funding for other kind of community-based projects. So I'm trying to see, so 50 million in grants for community renewable energy projects in cities other than Portland. Allows cities in Oregon to create our green tariff, but then also requires power companies to consider input from low-income ratepayers, environmental justice communities, federally recognized tribes and others. So it's a pretty big step in both energy justice, but then also achieving our climate goals. And then HB 2475, so this is kind of another one that I'm really excited past because it helps us also on our community green tariff. Then also it really helps us even touching on housing affordability is the Energy Affordability Bill. So previously we had base rates for essentially all, you know, electric customers and everyone had that base rate. And then you can apply for federal or local assistance to receive a discount on that base rate. And that's kind of the LIHEAP program. This instead would create a new lower rate structure for qualifying low-income customers. So instead of applying for assistance like a discount, a coupon, you're essentially entered into that lower, lower rate already. And the justification behind that is essentially low-income customers are often not the ones who are receiving the benefits that other ratepayers are receiving such as like smart energy or smart devices, things like energy efficiency improvements, even though we're all kind of chipping in to pay for that through Energy Trust of Oregon. They're often not the ones who are taking advantage of that in some other situations. And then there's
On that too, I mean, think of it similar to what we do on our, on our water and wastewater and stormwater rates where we give a discount to our low-income customers if they meet certain income thresholds. And the, those, those revenues or that loss in revenue subsidized by the rest of our customers.
Yeah. And the key is that they don't, LIHEAP is often seasonal. So you can get it for a season, either winter or summer. And so this would be continual, which as long as you're a customer and you're qualifying. So and another part too is that environmental justice communities are also included in those kind of rate-setting discussions at the PUC. This plays into our community green tariff goal because when we're thinking about developing a new carbon-free product, which would likely come as a premium, we have, we don't, I mean, we still have to consider who's going to be covering that premium, but there's not a significant gap between our low-income ratepayers up to the top premium dollar. Instead, we just had to figure out kind of that, that whipped cream on top of the premium rather than all the cake layers in between. Um, and then sadly HB 2398 did not pass during legislative session. It, we actually thought that it would, we was had a really good steam and then it kind of fell apart, fell apart at the end because some labor groups actually came out against it. And I think there was some misinterpretation of what it was and what it was essentially requiring. So that said, the group that we've been involved with, both the Zero Coalition as well as some other organizations that are interested in both weatherization as well as even just kind of local right to require building above base code. We're still kind of coming to the table to hopefully bring that back at the next session. And this is a significant part in achieving our 2035 goal. Because what it does is it allows us to have a more stringent building code in relation to energy efficiency. So I'm excited to continue those conversations. I know that Council President Heisey and Mayor Gamba have been a part of them. So I'm sure there's much more information to come, but it was still a success. Yeah.
And I think, and I did miss a meeting on Friday, apologies for that, but I'm pretty sure it was more than a, we hope it was a, it is coming back in a short.
I've heard through the grapevine, I think I saw something from, I don't want Eugene saying that they received confirmation that it was going to be reintroduced. But I, I didn't want to, I don't know what, what that politics spectrum is. So I will not say absolutely, but.
I was in the meeting on Friday and yes, we are reintroducing it. Yeah, the, I don't think there was so much confusion on the part of the labor as, as being fed misinformation
Yeah.
from the home builders and Northwest Natural. So they got people riled up with lies, basically.
And I will say, you know, a lot of the concern from Northwest Natural is that this is an electrification bill. But the bill is very explicitly fuels neutral because it's following the state building code, which is fuels neutral. So there's nothing in it that, that is saying that you cannot install natural gas. So I just want to, in case anyone's listening. I'm great. So Climate Collaborative, so I just wanted to give everyone a little update on this as well. I'm really excited kind of about this initiative. We're already seeing other communities who are calling and asking how they can have similar programs and offer similar events. The Climate Collaborative is essentially an online campaign in order to increase awareness of our climate action plan from a, essentially a joint movement from multiple stakeholders who are working in this climate action space without slapping our logo on it. So Climate Collaborative Communities is kind of the larger kind of campaign, Climate Collaborative Milwaukee. So Milwaukee is the first city to do it. And then we're hoping to kind of build upon this and have multiple cities doing it from years after. But the whole idea is to really promote local climate action plans, local organizations. And then really similar to kind of how we had our Climate Action Week where it's like small bite-sized steps for people to take in order to kind of help with the promotion and the, the gold achieving of our climate action plan. And it's for the online portion, it's kind of also a big keystone is this online pledge that you can sign. And as of late September, we had 90 pledges so far. I think that there was a few more that came in over the last couple of weeks, but I'm waiting on some numbers from PGE. But I really encourage folks to check out this microsite. It connects out to some local community-based organizations that we have in Milwaukee. And then also Energy Trust of Oregon has given some offers like to check out their blog and to look at low-cost, no-cost tips. So it's a really cool site and it's only going to get built upon. We kind of had to trim it down for, of course, the pandemic. But, you know, we've already been talking about doing youth summits, talking about doing, seeing how we can even get involved at school science fairs, seeing what we can do in terms of more in-person events. So really excited about that. And a big feature during this Climate Collaborative effort has been our Electric Tool Exchange, which we had a significant amount of tools actually exchanged. We had, let's see, 91 tools exchanged and recycled. So that's great because it goes from gas-powered tools to cleaner electric. And then we also had a solve event at Elk Rock Island. And so over 245 pounds of trash was collected during that event. So it's really great. Oh, yeah, Lisa.
And your tool exchange was full, like a full week before it actually happened. And I got stuck. I had a, I had something I wanted to exchange. They were able to bring it in.
You know, the irony is I did too. I was like, oh, wait until a little bit later. I kept forgetting to sign up myself. And then finally I was like getting ready to do it and they told me that I had to wait too. So.
Watching the Home and Garden Show is coming up. If you sign up to bring a tool and you not only get to bring, or several tools, I get to bring that tool and get the same exchange, but you also get free entry to the Home and Garden Show and free parking.
I didn't know about the free parking and entry.
So that might have been this past weekend though. I saw.
What was it?
I think it might have been.
Oh, shoot. I wasn't paying attention to the date.
Well, luckily.
I got to turn mine in.
This is the first of many.
The spring show is the 24th through the 27th of February. So. But yes, Lisa is right. The fall show was October 8th through the 10th.
I know PGE was already talking to Lake Oswego. They actually, once they heard that, that Milwaukee was doing it and what it was about, I got multiple calls from people in Lake Oswego wanting to do it too. So I'm sure that there'll be more to come. They are probably inundated with requests because it was such a successful event. And actually I will say too, kind of Milwaukee's ease with doing stuff like this with our, our local partners. You know, we're very laid back in terms of wanting to host events like this, wanting to give things a shot pilots in Milwaukee. And we're actually going to showcase some other pilots. But that I think lets us be some of the first in, in implementing this because we, we're open to trying new things and we don't. You know, and we're not scared by, by new potentially, you know, not successful events because we know that, you know, it'll work out. And I think this one really did. So I know PGE really appreciates that too. Okay. So Community Green Tariff. So I mentioned this before with HB 2021, but we are well within our neck deep in talking about energy with PGE. And the Community Green Tariff is I think going to be a key project that we'll be working on over the next year. So, so we're moving full steam ahead with tariff development. We're actually in a working group with Beaverton as well as PGE. And that's because Beaverton and Milwaukee, we essentially both want at least the same foundation, really prioritizing affordability, simplicity in order to move a little bit faster. And we'll still have, of course, our own customization of our own product. We can throw in some fun, some fun features, including if we want to do, you know, a little bit of community-based energy as well as other projects. But at least for that foundational tariff structure, we're kind of proceeding with Beaverton. So that way we don't each have our own tariff going through the pipeline at the PUC. And that way we can maybe move a little bit faster in terms of conversations. I will remind folks that there's a lot of community interest in this. So this is a survey that PGE sent out to their customers. They sent it out to Milwaukee, Beaverton, Portland and unincorporated Multnomah. So they had about 2,000 respondents, I believe, 2,000 to 2,500. For Milwaukee, they had about 380 respondents and there was a 78% of the respondents were interested. And I believe right around that same number, 78 to 80% were interested, even with a 5% premium on their bill, which is really encouraging to hear. And this is actually really reflective of overall for all the other communities as well, right around that 80% interested is kind of what we're seeing. And so there's, of course, you know, we'll, we'll be doing some outreach with this effort and we'll be doing a lot of more conversations with the community. But at least as a baseline, I'm encouraged to know that there's, this is of interest. And I think it's definitely worthwhile for, for both PGE customers as well as Milwaukee residents. Upcoming topics with PGE. So we had our really kind of first dive-in meeting and we were talking a little bit about pricing as well as kind of resource mix and sizing. But really now we need to go into things like opt-out provisions. So, you know, this whole model is based off of, it's voluntary, but we're shifting the dynamic where instead of having to call and go online and sign up for a renewable product, when you open an account in Milwaukee, you're automatically enrolled in the renewable product. But then you can call and say, I don't actually want this. I want to opt out. So we just need to work on how that works for both folks who are already signed up for voluntary renewable products, but then also folks, you know, who just open a new account or move addresses. Another thing that we need to talk about are low-income protections, just ensuring that that premium for the low-income ratepayers are covered and how we want to go about that in terms of cost sharing, in terms of subsidies, et cetera. And then a big feature too, you know, as the larger grid gets decarbonized and it's at a slower timeline than what Milwaukee's goals are, we're going to still move ahead with our kind of carbon-free energy generation. But what happens when the base grid mix is 100% renewable? Kind of how do we transition from kind of paying a little extra from our own assets to potentially being paid for being first adopters or, you know, subsidizing or paying for that infrastructure that now all ratepayers can use. So it's a little bit of a tricky contract legal situation. So it's going to have some robust conversations, talking about the credits and the program end of life and such. So those are conversations to come. And so we'll be coming to you to keep you updated on, on how that develops. But overall, I think we have a pretty good idea of what the product itself would look like. We just need to figure out more along the, the ratepayer portion of it. And then also who kind of owns that infrastructure at the end. So. Were there any questions on the Community Green Tariff?
Yeah. So earlier you talked about the low-income assistance. Is there any way that that can just be directly rolled in to our green tariff program so that it's seamless?
Yeah. So, so if you are a low-income electric customer and say we have this hypothetical green product, that's the Milwaukee product. When you create an account in Milwaukee, you will still get that low income, you will be bundled into the low-income ratepayers. The question is that premium for, for the Milwaukee product, we have to figure out who's going to be paying for that because we don't want to put that on the low-income customer. We want to figure out either, how do we go about having all ratepayers kind of subsidizing that cost? Or does the city want to back a portion of it? We'd have to kind of figure out what that cost will even be. So that's kind of the question, but the low-income rate is, is going to be, I mean, because this is a voluntary product. What it is, is that if you're a low-income ratepayer, you can't get a renewal currently. You can't sign up for Green Source, which is the voluntary renewable product and get that covered by LIHEAP or federal funding or other ratepayers. Because it's voluntary. So our product is still voluntary. So we need to figure out who's going to be paying for that premium. Because the key is we don't want to say if you are a low-income, you cannot get renewable energy.
No, we want the opposite. We want to be able to say, if you're low-income, you're automatically enrolled and your rate is less than.
Right. And so, so it's kind of like a, we first have to make sure that they are in the right price range, right? They're in the low-income price range, which is maybe 50 cents instead of a dollar. But that 10-cent premium that is for the Milwaukee product, we don't want them to pay for that 10-cent premium as well. We want other ratepayers to either subsidize the cost or the city to subsidize part of the cost. That's what we still need to figure out because we don't know the number of low-income ratepayers in Milwaukee currently. And we don't know what that total premium is going to be. So there's still a lot of unknowns right now.
PGE, well, who, who's going to be managing the LIHEAP process?
So that's the thing is, is I don't think LIHEAP is going to be going away. I'm not sure how that works.
Whatever we're calling the new system.
Yeah, I think PGE is now starting to work with the PUC as well as all the other IOUs, all the other investor-owned utilities to figure out who's going to be on that low-income rate. How do they qualify for it? And what's the longevity of it? I think those, that's its own specific kind of program. And I think those nuts and bolts are still to be determined right now. PGE has a list of folks who are applying for LIHEAP, but those might not be the same people. There might be expanded. There might be more people who are on this new low-income rate. And that's the goal is that more folks who qualify can actually get assistance.
Sure.
So I think, but I was just going to say the, the goal, the, the outcome here is what, what I see is the outcome is that the low-income customer gets the benefits of being on, on the green tariff at no extra cost. So you know, that the easiest, the most simplest way is that the, the revenue requirement associated with those low-income customers are blended into the overall rate tariff, green tariff rate, similar to what we do on our water and wastewater and stormwater rates.
Natalie, is this a location where we could talk about a long-term funding mechanism actually for the sustainability program?
Um, maybe. We asked that question of PGE. They said that they have to look into it. I think the, you know, it has to be so focused on energy because it's coming out of electric customers' rates. I, I would see it more as infrastructure than anything, but we asked PGE that question and they said they'd look into it.
Yeah, we've, we've had at least two conversations with them about this. I think one in July and then last month in September specifically, is there a way to include as part of this tariff of funding mechanism for climate work in, in Milwaukee? And like Natalie said, the answer was maybe. So we're, we're going to, we're going to continue to investigate that and, and see, and see what we can flesh out. Because you know, the, there is some fuzziness in the legislation that, that talks about not just the energy, but some of the, some of the co-benefits associated with what we're trying to do. So.
So going back to the, a few months ago, Natalie said, we don't know how many people are on the low-cost the low-income energy. We don't know, but PGE knows, right? They just haven't told us yet.
Well, so there's a few different programs that folks can participate in that I'm aware of. There's programs at the county level and the federal level. There's also like nonprofits that can help with certain things. We can ask, I mean, it's a, it's a protected, PG is very hesitant to give up that data because it is a protected community of individuals. I think we've asked about it before a few years ago. And we can ask them for that data again. We are actually doing an update for our greenhouse gas inventory. So that might be an opportunity to request that data, but.
Well, and I'm not talking about asking for people's identifying information. I'm just talking about asking numbers and how, how that does compare with like what our experience is on the water.
It's because it's seasonal too. So we have some folks who are on it only for a few months and then they're off of it. So it takes a little bit of number crunching on PGE's part is what I'm aware of. So we've asked for it before, I believe. So I can ask for it again.
We did, and we did get some information from them about, probably about 18 months ago as it relates. And it was more, it was aggregated as, as sort of the total load. And it was really, it was hard to sort of pull out like how many actual customers because of the seasonality. But that, that, that is certainly something we'll, we'll get from them. I, I don't expect we'll have that, it will, it will be that difficult. So.
Natalie, do you have a sense, and I know you're really early in the negotiations, but of, of how, how long this negotiation might go for?
The goal is to have something to the PUC, I would say by next fall.
Okay.
Tariff through the PUC process by next fall, which means we still have outreach that we need to do. So we need to probably have a flushed out idea or concept of what this product would be by spring. So that way we can do community outreach and have, you know, of course, bring it back to council because then we still need to pass a resolution saying this is something we want to do. So I would assume that we would need to have, if we want to meet that fall deadline, we would need to kind of have a good sense by spring. So that way we can talk to the community.
And, and PGE is good with that timeline. I was wondering if 2475 had kind of affected their sense of how much time they'd need.
They are very interested in this. You know, at first they were very, I think, scared at the volume that we were talking about with Portland being interested in Milwaukee. And oddly enough, it's, it's kind of almost flipped in terms of a, they're, they're very proud of how many communities would be interested. I think they said that if all the communities who expressed interest would have a product like this, 70% of PGE's load would be covered by these community green tariffs. So that's a significant amount.
70% of the total load?
70% of their territory, I should say, would be essentially included in a community renewable product like this.
Because I thought like literally half of the electricity being used in the Milwaukee footprint is being used.
I should say spatially. So it's, it's 70% of their territory.
Okay. So not.
Not low. Sorry. Yeah, I'm, because I mean, I will say in terms of load, because as, as we've mentioned before, this is only for residential and small commercial. This doesn't cover those large commercial, large industrial. However, the legislation was written in that those customers can opt in to this product. So we'll still want to be doing outreach and encourage those customers. And those are actually really key customers to include in something like this because it's kind of a, a steady-state load. You, we typically know how much power they're going to be using. They don't have the variance of coming in and out of IOU territories. So it will be a really cool product. And if their green future impact, which is what the Milwaukee, what we signed up for, gosh, almost two years ago now, what we signed up for previously. There are, there are many companies and cities and folks jumping at the bit to sign up for that product still in multiple waves and tranches of that product. So I'm hoping that this will be as successful as that, as an opt-in option.
When, when we met with PG, I think in July, the first meeting we had with them. I mean, their very optimistic, aggressive timeline to file the tariff was having something going to the PUC in, in April. So filing in April and, you know, as Natalie said, that's sort of been pushed. It's sort of, the more realistic, the more realistic timeline is probably February as we talked with them last, or not February, but the fall as we talked with them last, a couple of weeks ago. And I think we have a meeting with them tomorrow as well.
We're now meeting just every other week. But, and you know, another thing too to add is we can make this as simple or as complex as we want. And that's the, the beauty in the legislation and how it was written is We can make this as simple or as complex as we want. And that's the, the beauty in the legislation and how it was written is. Um, some communities who have. More community based generation requirements, more complexity around stakeholders and, uh, community input. They may take quite a bit longer than us. Um, if we are interested in keeping it simple, we can likely move pretty quickly through this. Um, it just, we'll have to figure out, you know, how, what, what bells and whistles do we want? And is it worth it to wait a little longer to figure and how, how to hash those out? Or do we just kind of want to move ahead with something that's a little bit more fast and streamlined? So, once we start getting into the meat of it, um, those will be the questions that we're bringing back to council to ask for your input on. Great. Okay. Uh, well, this is another fun, fun project that's happening that we're working with PGE on. So this is on pole EV charging. So this is EV chargers that are installed on utility poles in the right of way. Um, PGE has started piloting these, uh, in the Portland metro area. I think only Portland, Southeast Portland, which is the picture that you see here on the right. I think the years, these are the only ones up in the, in PGE territory so far. Mm hmm. And so. Uh, Milwaukee will likely be the second location for these. We're looking at a few sites, a few poles already. Um, it's going to be part of a, um, kind of a larger effort to increase accessibility of charging infrastructure. Uh, when choosing sites for this, we're really prioritizing proximity to community centers and gathering spaces, but then also multifamily housing. Um, and, um, apartment complexes and locations that don't have like garages or areas to plug in. Um, and so we're hoping to do a little bit of outreach, of course, before installation of these. Um, I think one idea that, that kind of we were thinking of is. Um, wherever we're choosing, maybe also doing a little bit of like a street beautification, including some planting some new street trees. Working with property owners to also install some, um, kind of. Vegetation and, um, gardens in the right of way, just to, to make sure that they, they feel like this is contributing to their. Street. So, um, we're going to be, uh, PGE has, uh, been. Working on a construction schedule that they'll be sending us shortly. Uh, and then once we kind of know what that's going to look like, then we're going to dive right into outreach. Uh, the locations that we're interested in right now are close to, um, letting library, I believe. It's just a few blocks away. Um, more into the residential neighborhoods from the downtown space. Yeah, Lisa. I think you're muted.
Oh, she struggles with her mute. I, I'll ask her.
Okay.
Go ahead, Lisa.
Well, why near downtown since we have the, um, you know, the station there? And why, I mean, I do get the putting it near multifamily. Uh, but I mean, the east side of, the other side of two twenty four seems to be where we need it more. Um, why that location?
Yeah, if I'm, I mean, correct me if I'm wrong, Peter, but I think PGE looked at quite a few locations around Milwaukee and there was just a few. Features that they had to take into account such as proximity of the poles to the street, even within the right of way, how close they were to the edge. Um, the density of residents, um, the, of course. Walkability to other kind of commercial centers, somewhere where people would, if they wanted to actually use it temporarily, they would be able to walk around. So. You know, the goal for these is that they're typically, you know, within the day, two hour parking spots and then overnight it's longer charging. Um, and so they kind of have to consider both folks who would want to use it for residential, like charging their own vehicles overnight, but then also for. Temporary purposes. Um, but I think that they, they just had a bunch of different factors in the site, um, that they're, they're looking at. Just happened to work with the, the infrastructure as well as the community around it. I know there was a few other locations that they were looking at, particularly in East Milwaukee that, um, they were interested in. But, um, I think a concern was just mostly around how curved the right of way was, how close the poles were to the edge. And I think this is going to be, it does highlight a challenge that we're still kind of trying to figure out, which is how to increase. Both charging infrastructure on the east side, but then also how do we balance this with things like improved streets?
Also, do they have a, they probably have a program like this, but do they have a program where they're. Going to shopping centers and places like that? I mean, like the Wichita Shopping Center seems like a, a, a potential location. And also I know someone who is, lives in a condo. An older condo building that obviously has none of this. Um, and is interested in, you know, trying to find a cost effective way for. You know, maybe not the whole condo would go in, but a few people who want to buy electric cars would go in and. On something like this. Are they, do they have programs for that kind of thing?
Yeah, there's rebates available for level two chargers through utilities. I think PGE offers a pretty good rebate. Um, there's also some other, so that's for residential, right? Folks who are wanting to purchase the charger themselves. So the key with this charger and these, these on pole chargers is that they're public, meaning that there's a system for folks to go in and pay for charging. Um, they're also PG is working on a way to make it so, you know, if you're low income, you can apply for essentially like a charge card and stuff like that. They're looking at making. A very, of payment systems, but, um, there's rebates available for purchase. Um, that residents could potentially go in on. The hard part, of course, with all EV infrastructure is just ensuring that the. Um, electric system, the in- infrastructure at the site is available. So. If you're looking at a level two charger, you just have to make sure that you have that two twenty volt plug. Um, and so, you know, if you were a tenant, you have to work with your landlord to make sure not only is there a place for you to park, but then also that that. Infrastructure is close enough to a parking spot. There are on the commercial side, some even more options. PGE works really closely with their commercial customers to offer up charging infrastructure. Um, there's also a new program that, um, PG is offering and it's really, I would say more accessible for kind of larger. Co- large co- commercial customers, industrial customers. Um, where you, PGE owns essentially the underground infrastructure. So they'll come, they'll trench, they'll do all of that conduit work underground. And then you just pay for the, the charger itself with a discount, so. Um, that's something and then it's kind of almost like a long term. Um, lease or assurance that, that you're going to be buying essentially electricity through that charger for PGE. So that's something that they're rolling out. That's kind of a, a new tariff product that they got from the PUC. Um, but so there's a few different things that folks can do. And then of course, you know, uh, one thing I would encourage particularly if there's a community center or maybe a. Of, of quite a few neighbors, um, you know, looking into installing a charger is PG does also offer grant opportunities. To the Drive Change Grant Fund. Um, and you know, I think it's, anyone is really welcome to submit, um, an application. So, um, there's a few maybe opportunity through that. And then depending on, of course, where they are and how. Um, this rolls out, uh, for HB twenty twenty one. Um, you know, charging infrastructure and resilience infrastructure, um, could be part of that fifty million dollar pot going towards communities for. Um, essentially improvements.
So yeah, like in this apartment, I mean, in this condo, I think the. Goal is different than I, like I have the, the, uh, level two that I. Haven't filed my rebate paperwork for, but I will, um, and, um. But I think they are looking for something where people pay. They're not looking to, because, yeah.
Yeah, sometimes you can work with, um, you know, there's many private companies that offer up like Blink. Um, or Chargeway and sometimes they, I would assume they would work with businesses to install chargers. Um, but I'm not sure about the subscription. I'm not sure about, um, essentially, you know, how that works on the backend for it. Uh, but that could be a way to maybe even get a discount. Uh, they would just have to kind of reach out. Uh, another agency that I would suggest anyone reach out to who might is probably is very knowledgeable, I should say, is Fourth Mobility. Fourth is kind of an EV advocacy promotion group, their community based organization. Um, and they would be able to connect residents with, I would say, the most up to date kind of resources for getting EV chargers.
Okay, thank you.
Russell Falter has a question.
Yeah, I was wondering about that sign there. Um, in Portland, are these, are these, um, spots enforced? By parking enforcement? So you only, you can only park there if you're actively charging?
So I think the intent, it's my aware, it's my understanding that the intent is that you can only park there if you're charging. However, Portland, I do not believe is enforcing parking on that space. And so I think it would be, you know, a little bit of a. Uh, it's a test, you know, there's only one of them in that right of way charging in the Portland area. So I think Milwaukee would also be the second case of. How many self-reported or how many reports from other EV chargers are we getting from folks saying that these are filled? We would ask, I believe, Peter, we talked to PG about this and asked that PGE would be playing an active role as well.
Yeah.
I can, I can tell you that, um, we have encountered in numerous places that the charging station itself. Will charge you a fee if you are parked there and, uh, you haven't moved after a couple of hours. Now that's predicated on the expectation that your car is connected in the first place because otherwise it, it doesn't know, but. It does provide an incentive for people who are parked there to charge to move along and let the next person come in at least. So maybe that's part of this. I don't know.
That is how Salt Lake City handles it.
Great. Well, we look forward to kind of updating everyone on how this product or project develops because I think it's really exciting. Tree code, the never ending tree code. So, um, this is. Essentially what, what I've been focusing and Peter's been focusing a lot of time on. Um, recently we submitted a, uh, measure fifty six public notice. So that's essentially a land use notice that went out to everyone's homes. Um, unfortunately, there was an error at the printer where, um, many individuals, I guess, received empty envelopes. And so we were kind of did this big production on making sure everyone received a, you know. An envelope addressed specifically to them. Unfortunately, some people opened that up and it was empty. So, um, we're actually delaying, um, tree code coming to planning commission in order to resend out a public notice. To make sure that everyone gets something in their, uh, their hand aware of, of the tree code. I've actually already received. Um, quite a few calls from community members about tree code after receiving that notice. Um, I've actually, I was telling Peter earlier, I've actually been very encouraged by those calls. A lot of folks will call and they're very, um, kind of. Like, what is this? You know, why, I don't understand what's going on. And after talking to them about it, um, they walk away saying like, well, I still don't know if I like this, but I feel better about it. So that's kind of the interactions that I've been having. And a lot of the question is kind of that time old, um. You know, I don't know how I feel about the city regulating stuff on private property is kind of the, the real. Kind of linchpin to, to a lot of the arguments that I've been hearing. Um, so I think that there's going to be, of course, a lot of outreach needed, a lot of reassurance, a lot of, um. Kind of materials showing people that this process is meant to be streamlined. This process is supposed to be for the benefit of the community if it is passed. Um, and so I'm already receiving calls and I'm sure we will continue to receive calls. Um, but there've been some really good conversations, actually.
I just wanted to add for anybody who's watching tonight or for any council members who just learned about our, our fund mailing debacle. Uh, that Natalie actually did everything right. So did staff. We had a problem with how the mailers were stuffed. Um, through our mailing house. I really appreciate the partnership with the mailing house and they're helping us clean that up. Uh, but I do just want to make sure I highlight Natalie's worked really hard on making sure that this is very transparent. And, and I really appreciate that.
I will talk to anyone about tree code there. Welcome to give me a call. Many, many conversations about tree code. I will be an expert if I'm not already. Um, okay, but there are some revisions that we're doing, even, you know, from these conversations that we're having both with council as well as other staff. Um, we're making small tweaks to the tree code that was proposed in August, things around ensuring that there's no barriers to removing invasive species. Um, things around process to make sure that this tree code works well on the backend for staff, both planning staff as well as our natural resource team. Um, so as these kind of tweaks go on, I think it really does improve the tree code. So. Um, I really encourage folks, both residents, stakeholders to go to engage milwaukeeoregon.gov and that's the address that you see there bolded. Um, and just check out the draft tree code and write in any comments that you have. There's a really good online discussion happening there. Um, I've tried to respond back to folks who post comments. Um, so if folks have questions about the tree code, I encourage you to take a look there, um, as well as. You know, the idea behind this tree code, and I think especially in conversations with community members, it starts to kind of make sense is that. We're bringing this along with the housing code, along with the parking code. And, you know, this is kind of that. That three legged stool that we're trying to make sure everything's balanced. And so that way we don't have folks. Down the line who are upset about losing a whole bunch of trees or upset that, you know, trees are preventing building housing. And so. Um, we're making sure all of this is compatible with each other, which is why it's kind of all in this one big package. Um, so if you go to engage dot milwaukeeoregon.gov and then you go to the comprehensive plan implementation page. You should see a lot of information about tree code and the other code packages that the city's been working on. Um, another big thing that we've been working on is outreach. So, uh, both through our comprehensive plan implementation. Uh, through the Engage Milwaukee page, hopefully folks received a postcard. Uh, we've been out at, um, farmer's market tables, talking about comp plan. Uh, but then also we've been working with Enviro issues on developing, um, kind of our urban forest programming outreach. Um, that's things that will help us like brochures, templates for informational handouts, kind of. A, a recognizable logo. So as we start kind of having both tree code, but then also like, uh, tree improvements or. Tree protections and right of ways associated with transportation projects. All of these kind of one-off things dealing with natural resources in the city are under this umbrella so that way folks know. That there's one number to reach out to if they have questions. Um, so we just developed, uh, our, today I just got word that we got our urban forest. I'm going to call the urban forest hotline. Up on which is, um, I'll be posting that information on our city website. We have urbanforest@milwaukeeoregon.gov, which is the email address that goes to our natural resource team. So if folks are listening and they have questions about it, um, I encourage you to reach out to the city because we have a lot of people checking those inboxes. Um, Arbor Day, Arbor Day is on its way. Uh, it's going to be on November sixth from eight thirty bright and early to noon. Uh, that's because we're overlapping this with a few other events that day. It's actually going to be a very busy day. I'm excited. We're going to have our Friends of Trees planting event. Our leaf drop and Arbor Day are all going to be on the same day. So our Johnson Creek campus where our public works is, is going to be bustling. Lots of folks there, uh, doing things related to trees. Um, so our Arbor Day celebration is going to start at eight thirty. That's when volunteers should be showing up with our Friends of Trees planting. We're going to be doing a ceremonial tree planting of a giant sequoia on our site to add to our beautiful grove of trees. We're creating our own little forest there. Um, and then we're going to be having Arbor Day donuts. And then also what will be really helpful too is we're going to have an Ask an Arborist booth. So our urban forester Courtney Wilson will be there. So if folks are asked, wondering about kind of the trees we're looking at planting. Or having questions about trees in their own yard, I encourage you to show up and we'll have some folks there to answer questions. We also have a big tree giveaway. So we have white oaks, we have giants sequoias, we have even some smaller, um, flowering. Red current, there we go, flowering red current, we're going to be passing out. So all sorts of species, all sorts of trees, um, even some dogwoods too, so. And then, um, I did want to also, uh, throw out a plug in case folks are going to be hearing some news coming down. We're going to be doing our seasonal tree trimming on, on Milwaukee streets. So for our local code, residents should be trimming up. Um, tree limbs to eight feet over the sidewalk and then twelve feet over the streets. The city, you know, we kind of go around and we make sure that that twelve feet clearance is, is cleared just for our street sweeper and other, um, trucks going through. Um, though some folks like to do their own tree trimming. So what we're going to be doing is we're going to be working on some routes and making sure that we let folks know when we're going to be doing tree trimming in their neighborhood. So that way, if they're interested in doing it themselves, they can kind of go out there, take care of their trees. Otherwise, we'll be coming around and. All of this work is under the, the guidance of our urban forester. So we're going to be taking care of the trees in a, a good and best management practice way. Um, but just letting folks know because some people really, they baby their trees and they want to do it. So it's totally fine. I'm happy about that. And so there will be more information about that coming, both in the pilot as well as social media posts. And then. Oh, my computer's not wanting to go. There we go. Okay. Finally, the Clackamas Climate Action Plan Update. So, um, we had our first meeting this morning. So it sounds like really what's happening, uh, with the climate action plan. And this is kind of the first wave of information. There's more to come. Is that, um, the, the county is meeting with cities in climate, uh, cities in the county who are. Um, both having climate action plans as well as do not have climate action plans. So it was a really great group of folks. To kind of hear how all of our communities would be interested in utilizing. In utilizing Clackamas County's Climate Action Plan. And then what are the individual goals for our community and how does that relate to the goals for the county climate action plan? So um, it's kind of a separate city work group. It's not um, an opportunity for cities to provide feedback to the specific actions that are in the Clackamas Climate Action Plan. It's more on how do we as stakeholders plan on utilizing this? And how can they ensure that it's formatted or that they're providing the best resources for utilization? Um, there is a separate public comment period that will be opening soon. So we're kind of in that that phase three, you can see here on their their process. So starting in November, they're planning on releasing kind of the first draft and then getting public review and comment back. They told us that that is when they're going to be um, hopefully getting um, feedback from both our communities, elected officials, staff. But then also residents. So um, that's what I know so far. Uh, I haven't seen the draft plan myself. Um, but I I did ask about kind of overall support and kind of how that process is moving, because I knew it was delayed a year. And they just said that that overall, the Clackamas County Commission is supportive of the goals of the Climate Action Plan. And that they're hoping to have this completed by next year.
So I. I want to clarify something. Um, so you just said. There's a, there's an online comment period and they may be reaching out or will be reaching out to. Elected officials in the county to get our feedback, or if we want to give feedback, we should do it online.
Mark, I believe this is coming to C four in November. So I'm guessing that that's what they're referring to. Um, is it, it's either November or December, but it is on, it's in the work plan for C four uh, to have an update and and receive some feedback.
Yeah, I'm not sure about kind of how that public process will go. Um, but if I receive any sort of link for public comment, I'll make sure to share it with everyone.
I think we can do both.
I encourage, I strongly, and that's actually, you know, one thing that that I was talking to county staff about. Um, was, you know, one, the goals that I expressed, at least um, for my own, you know, personal belief is that. You know, the the value of a county climate action plan is just generating consistency in actions across cities. So not necessarily preventing a city from going above and beyond. If anything, I want to make sure they're raising that benchmark. And I'm likely to be that person saying you should do more. Um, but making it so that it's a toggle kind of approach. So that way, say, if Wes Lynn, who's interested in doing climate work, but um, might not have the resources. Uh, if we, for example, used uh, Home Energy Score, maybe they can start with a voluntary Home Energy Score program. And then as they kind of increase their climate action work as a city, they can toggle that up to mandatory, just how Milwaukee has it. But we're all still using that same residential energy disclosure. So that way there's consistency across the county. And that's kind of the, what I said would likely be my goal out of this process is just making sure that that. All of us communities are using kind of the same metric to track what we're doing, but then also utilizing the same resources. So that way it's not confusing city to city. Um, and I will say too, out of this conversation, a lot of the communities were just like, well. We've just been looking at Milwaukee's Climate Action Plan, and I think we were just going to probably use that. And so I think already there's, you know, a lot of folks are are instantly reaching out, being like, tell me more about your climate action plan. So um, we are by far the most per. Furthest on our climate action work out of the group of communities, and we are definitely being viewed as a leader in this area. So um, that's a, I think, a shining light and it reflects very well upon the work that this council has done. And um, it's very, makes me very proud to be in these meetings. So. Um, yeah, so.
Work that you have done.
I I don't know how it's been. It's all now been three, pretty much three years. So I don't know where time went. Only, only, uh, how many more do we have? Twenty-seven more to go till our twenty fifty goal. So we'll get there. All right. Uh, all right, and that's pretty much it. Um, so I just want to point out, if folks are interested in learning more about our climate action work, they can go to milwaukeeclimateaction.com. I also strongly encourage everyone to visit engage milwaukeeoregon.gov um, to access both uh, the comprehensive plan project. But then also all the other kind of engagement projects that the city's um, ongoing right now and working on. And of course, you can reach out to me if there's any questions.
I think one other thing I wanted to add to, and I think in our next update, uh, and I think it's either in February or March. We'll be coming back to sort of talk about uh, climate funding strategies. So how we're funding our programs and have a a a more detailed discussion about that. We're, we're having some very preliminary discussions, but certainly aren't ready to to have a detailed discussion yet on that.
Thank you, guys. Work as usual.
Of course.
Questions, anyone? And Natalie, it's sooner than that. We don't have a twenty fifty goal. We only have.
I don't know. I don't know anymore. It's next year. I'm shooting for next year.
I'm with you.
Perfect. Well, thank you. And of course, reach out if you have any questions.
All right.
I told you, Peter, I'd get it done in one hour.
Outstanding. All right. Well, thank you, everybody. Have a good evening.
Night.
All right, good night, everyone.